We'll go ahead and get our work session started this evening. Welcome. Is there a motion to accept or modify the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to modify the agenda. There are some items on the action agenda that I think we can move to the consent agenda. I'd like to move headings A, B, D, E, G, and I to consent agenda.
Okay, and because at a work session, the public is allowed to speak on the action items, is there anyone here this evening that had planned to speak on A, B, D, E, G, or I? Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Great, thank you. Next, we're moving to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as modified.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Okay, so on to our action agenda. The first new item is going to be previous action item C, which is the approval of request for additional appropriation to the budget category $65,000, School Services, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This item actually is a good thing in the sense that this deals with our cafeteria and it deals with our ability to be serving even more meals than we previously had anticipated. So the explanation and summary of this is due to an increase in the number of meals served and a corresponding increase in meal reimbursement, the food service program is on track to exceed its originally appropriated, approved appropriations of the $3,392,190 projected $732,250. In order to receive and spend this additional amount, an increase in the category, the code category of $65,000, school food service budget must be approved by the Board of Supervisors. So just in kind of lame terms here is that each year where we are appropriated, what we request for each of those categories, and this year in the cafeteria category, the amount that we were appropriated is less than what we are going to, well, I should say this, to spend, but we're reimbursed all this entire amount of money. There is no loss of money here. It's more of a formality. We're going to be reimbursed for all those meals that we have that will actually exceed the $732,000. You don't really know at the beginning of the year how many meals you're going to serve. And when we go into where all students are eating free, then all students eat free. So with this, it's really a formality for the board to release the money, the money of which we already have. We already have this money. And you may think, well, Buck, that we're getting reimbursements back in, should that take care of this? They don't really match because you're spending, like on every meal, you're spending a certain amount of money on that. Yes, you're being reimbursed, but that reimbursement, which is probably up here compared to what we spent, which is down here, this one, the revenue can't offset what we already asked for as far as appropriation. So when this money is appropriated back to us, the amount we would take in will exceed the $732,000. I hope I didn't say that as confusing as it sounded to me personally, but it's more of a formality. It's actually a good thing because we have more kids eating.
I mean, Mr. Smith, I'll be honest, we were letting you explain that to clear that up for us, and basically it's a good thing, is what we'll summarize that up, okay?
So it sounds like we're getting in more money for the meals served than we had anticipated? Is that right? And we need to appropriate this so that those funds can be spent?
We had, and our expenditures have exceeded what we thought we would have to exceed. So we also received a letter from the State Department telling us that our fund balance was too high, that we needed to spend additional funds out of there. So if you remember, some of the LFK project, we're buying some of those. We're also doing all these other renovations in our cafeterias because really I think it's three months they want you to have a fund balance?
Yeah.
Three months? And we're way above that. And so we did receive a letter that said, you need to spend these dollars. And so they have been in the process of spending. So just for example, if we had an appropriation of 3.2, we've brought in 3.8, and we've spent maybe 3.3 to 3.4 because the, you know, we're having to spend that because that money's coming in. And so it's just a formality to make sure that it's approved, so.
General.
Yes.
I have a question that just popped into my head. So this new roof that we need on the food services building, can that be paid for out of the food services?
So that's not all total food service? I think we'd have to look into that because that's shared between facilities and food service, so.
Just not used.
That's a good question.
That's true here and up there.
That's a very good question, and I think it's something that maybe we could ask and check in on, but that is a very good question. And see, I mean, if it's allowable, then why not?
Yeah.
Why not cover that expense?
Yeah.
So I think we could.
It can be, we asked.
Oh, you asked? Okay.
That has to be used in cafeteria food service.
Okay, okay. Sorry. So Mr. Helmer was checking on it.
I like, he raised.
I tried.
You always have to answer before I'm asking.
Any other questions for Mr. Smith on this? Is there a motion?
I move that the superintendent be authorized to request that the Warren County Board Supervisors increase the school board's FQAD 2022-2023 cafeteria fund by $732,250 in category $65,000, School Fund Services.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, we have, actually, it's Mr. Smith again, approval of custodial service management contract renewal.
All right, thank you. On June 3, 2020, the Warren County School Board entered into an agreement with Sedexo Operations to manage the custodial operations of the school division. The agreement contains a clause that allows the contract to be renewed annually for four additional one-year periods upon the mutual consent of both parties. The recommendation is to renew the custodial service management contract with Sedexo for an additional one-year period beginning July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. If approved, this will be the, actually, it's the third renewal to the contract. The initial agreement for 2022 school year included a 12-month contract and the amount not to exceed $2,082,501. The second renewal was $2,134,564, and this year's renewal is $2,263,583. In your packet on your screen there, you should have the renewals and the amendment that was done in 2022-2023 in July. This contract is identified as a fixed cost contract for this upcoming school year with the amount of $2,263,583. The contract that originally, that I sent out, I have an addendum to that contract or a revision to that contract that I would like to hand out. It's more of two revisions or clauses that were put in there that I felt uncomfortable about having that in there. And I talked to Sedexo late last week and into early part of this week, and our attorney, and they both feel that those two clauses could be removed, so I'm just going to hand these out. There were two clauses in there. One was under Section 5. I've removed them from the current contract here in front of you. And in there, it talked about mandatory meetings, quarterly meetings, and those are things that we're going to have. We're going to have quarterly meetings this year to go over where we are in regards to our contract, how our service is going. It's an opportunity for both parties to sit down and just evaluate where we're doing, how things are going. But inside that particular clause, it also mentioned some things in there in regards to this would be an opportunity if things, if changes were to be made, or if we were to make as a board a change in scope or those types of things to the contract. And to me, that became a little muddy, and it became a little confusing because, and it just, to me, opened up a door of just some muddy water, so, because this is a fixed cost contract, so we had that removed. So that's not in there. And then the latter part of that, it was under Section 6 on that original document, and that was a procurement. There was a procurement method that was put in there. And with the procurement method, the procurement itself for this particular RFP, and the contract, it's already been set by the process of which we went through, through the RFP. So there would be no use to put in there any type of difference to procurement as we would follow what we originally have done for this particular, our contracts that we've had. Some of the, I wouldn't say changes per much, but highlights is that we did in Section 3 identify the fixed cost, and then we also put in there that if there were to be any changes, or if there's, then there would be a process of which that would occur, and that that process, anything over $15,000, we would have to have not only a mutual agreement with Sedexo, who I think would be happy about that, but our board would have to be the one that would approve any of those, any of those changes in the amounts. We've been pleased with Sedexo and what they've been able to put together and to do for us with our schools. And if you look under 4, it actually refers to it as Section 3.2. And over the years, with Sedexo Food Service, we've used the CPI as an opportunity, and that's what we would increase the contract by. It was, it's good for planning. It's also good because it helps us to be able to keep up with the funds and so forth as far as for Sedexo to put out a group of employees who are making a good wage, and if people are happy with their position, they most likely will stay. So we put the CPI in this contract, just, and we put under there if applicable and subject upon mutual agreement of parties. So if applicable simply refers to if we go into a contract in the future together, and that it would be agreed upon by both parties, we would look at the CPI as an opportunity to say that's what we would start to increase the contract by because that would help us with our budgeting process, and it would also kind of take away some of the uncertainties of the amounts that we would be spending for a future contract. But once again, it's if applicable, and it's based upon mutual agreement of both parties.
When you say mutual agreement of both parties, is that talking about us as a board would be the agreement of this party?
It would be the Warren County Public Schools, Warren County Public Schools, which you would represent, yes? And Sedexo as the vendor. Those would be the mutual.
So we would have to vote on it before?
Exactly.
We did or didn't follow this deal.
Right, exactly, exactly. You would be that, you would be that part, part of that party.
That's my only question, I think it's good. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
In order to motion, perhaps we may want to include, since I handed you out a revision of what was originally out, maybe that should be just mentioned in that motion, if you so recommend it.
I move approval be given for the superintendent to sign the amendment to the service agreement as revised with Sedexo Operations LLC to extend custodial services from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024 in the amount of $2,263,583.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, and then our last action item for this evening is going to be the approval of the 2024 school board budgets and associated salary scales, Dr. Melanger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. This budget, we've been over it multiple times. It is something that you are familiar with, and there really are no changes that we've made except for some of the updates from where we restructured special services and changed out some of those positions, and so I will, I will highlight those tonight. So when looking at, well, Mr. Grant's going to go through that for me. Thank you, sir. It's, it's my job to present a proposed budget to the board. When we look at our budget process, of course, this starts in November. It's on the next slide. That starts in November and goes all the way through, well, now. And when you look at our budget process, there's multiple meetings that are involved, and so we, okay, I thought it was slide. I was sitting down.
Oh, you were just sitting here.
It wasn't changing for me. Okay. And so when we look at our breakdown of our budget, again, you can see by position what the total percentage of that is when it comes to our budget by certain positions within the school system. Then we have our ADM that we based our budget off of, that's $4,998. We also did the comparison of percent above required local effort. What that is, is that's what the state says our locality's supposed to provide for us versus what they provide for us. And so we did that as a percentage above, and so you can see way back in 2014, it was about 85% above required local effort, and it fit anywhere between the 70s, 60s, and we're getting it down into the 40s now. So it's only about 40%, and that is as a 2022. So of course, this year's budget is not, you know, this year's number's not on there because it's not final, and then we wouldn't have next year, so. But those numbers are getting, getting lower, which, you know, is good for constituents. You know, there's, our piece of the pie is, it seems like it continues to grow, but the amount that the county is putting in above what is required by the state has actually So again, by the numbers, based our budget on $4,998, current full-time students, we have 5,206, part-time students, 18, for a total of 5,224. State revenue, $38,93115. It's an increase of $1.211 million, and of course, you know, that's old news about the reduction. We knew we weren't going to get that money, but that was what was taken out. Federal revenue, $4.98 million. We are transferring $300,000 from healthcare. We did not want, you know, we did see that slight increase in our premiums. We don't want that to affect our employees, so we took that out of our healthcare to help cover that. Miscellaneous revenue, $500,000, and so the local revenue ask was $28,650. So this slide is different than the previous slides. All those others have kind of been the same. And what we did is I went in and added some things that we have taken action on to adjust as we restructured some things to make sure that it fit, would fit within our budget. And so reclassification, when we did the restructure of special services, so you guys approved that at the June meeting. I added that in here because that is reflective of the decision that was made by the board to reclassify some certain positions and how to separate special services into two programs, with special services or special education and pupil services. And so that is, those changes are reflected in here. Also, the, you know, the monthly attendance incentive, that is reflected in here. I didn't see it on the first slide, so I don't know why it wasn't in there on the first one, but, so I put it in here because Rob and I went through that this afternoon, making sure everything was on there that has been inputted into our budget for this school year. Then moving on down, you have the administration, the finance director, policy services, fuel, utilities, and we did have an error over here. If you remember, in some of the last, we had grades 11 and 40 on there. That was only going, that we're only going to get a step raise. What we find out, when going back through, those classifications only get, they got the 5% last year. It wasn't like the 3 that are up here that we totally modified the pay structure, and so we went back in and had to build in to make sure that we could get down that 35%. And so that was just a, you know, reflected here. So we did catch that error pretty, pretty early, and so, but that was changed to reflect So just moving on down to where we're at, our projected revenue is $72,524,408. Salaries and benefits, $61,536,183. And then our non-labor is just under $11 million, at $10,988,225. And if we bring all the revenue in and have all those expenditures, that should zero us When we look at capital improvements, we still have, you know, the LFK project, so a lot of that is still pending. So funding project of $15 million, we still have all those funds. I know Mr. Smith and his team have been making sure that they're utilizing the PESR grants that are cycling out, so that is still part of our budget for this next year because we should hopefully park in there by August. And I don't know, maybe if the board wants to at some point in time, go by and check out the new rooms that have been completed at LFK. They're really nice. They are really nice. They've done a really good job with them, and it's, it's a lot different, and it is a very inviting atmosphere, and it's really student-child focused, so it's really nice. Also, in capital improvement, which you guys approved at the last board meeting, I believe, and I know Buck is getting that to the board supervisor, I know he talked to Dr. Daley about it the other day, but we did do an A and E for Evilson-Morison to start on that project, so that would be part of our budget. And remember, those funds are coming out of the CIP funds that are held on the county side, so that's not our operational, that's not our bread and butter. Those are, those are other funds sitting out here in the wing. And then we have that cooling tower that we need to get down and fill the jay. Mr. Helmer told me he might be able to squeeze one more year out of it.
Get through this summer.
You know, get through this summer, okay? So not a full year. So we will have to definitely do something with that cooling tower and update our management system. I think that's the one that controls all of our heat there. I know we got some calls yesterday about, you know, the air at, I think, the Skyline High School with the, that it was a little chilly, and so, you know, this would help us also, updating that system will help us manage that thing a little better, but I know Mr. Helmer helped to address that problem yesterday, but that's what that management system does, is it controls all of our schools' heat there, so. So we get down to our classifications. You can see that instruction, $54,718,958. Administration attendance and health, $2,891. Oh, sorry, I'm reading off the wrong one. $3,377,366 for administration and health. Pupil transportation, $3,183,179. Operations maintenance, $7,327,964. Food service, $3.919 million. Facilities, and that facilities, that is where the LFK project stuff is, because we have to account for that. And then the debt service and the technology for a total of $23,24, for a total of $89,583, And then we also have our salary scales on here. Each year, we ask you guys to approve those. We did catch some errors with some dates and stuff, and one of, some of them had 2334 on it, so we caught some of those typos and had to change some of those, but I think we're ready for the salary scales in our budget to be approved.
Any questions on the budget?
If there are any questions, is there a motion on the budget?
I move that the fiscal year 2024 school board budget in the amount of $89,583,540 and the fiscal year 2024 salary scales be approved as presented.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
Can we also ask if anyone has to comment on this?
Sure. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on the budget?
Any discussion from the board?
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Thank you for all the work that everybody put into getting this budget figured out. Thank you, Ms. Lo and Dr. Hunt. Next, we're moving on to our work session items. First item is going to be the 2324 fee change proposal for Blue Ridge Tech. Mr. Gregg, are you presenting?
Hey, how are you all? Nice to see you. Very popular topic, increasing class fees. But the reason we're looking at this is simply just the cost of our instructional materials has increased pretty dramatically. The example that Ms. Baker provided was that a box of welding rods that we used a year or two ago was about $50. Right now, that same box costs us about $200, and across our trades and industry classes, we've seen the same sort of increase in materials that our kids use. So if you guys take a look at it, I think the greatest increase that's proposed, and you'll see, is a $10 increase. And again, the goal there is to just put more materials in the, in the hands of our students so that they continue to get that firsthand experience when they sign up for our classes. I would also add that we have never turned a student away for an inability to pay any of these fees, and that's certainly not something that we would ever consider doing in the future. The sole goal is to try to offset some of those increasing costs.
Any questions for Mr. Gregg, please? Thank you, Mr. Gregg.
Thank you.
So this will be on our agenda for July, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Which while we're talking about that, there is a date change on that. It's the 12th, correct?
It is the 12th.
Yes, just while we're talking about our July meeting, we'll just mention that. Next up, we have the 2324 BSBA membership. Flyers are attached. As you all know, we have switched from our Paul's Services with the BSBA and went with our own attorney through Sands Anderson. Basically, dues are coming up due again, so this has been popped on our work session to just see what our general thoughts are with continuing membership with the BSBA, if there's any benefit that our school administration, school board members are receiving through training. Do you have that information? How many of our teachers?
No, I do not have the information on how many attend VSBA trainings. You know, that would just be individual central office staff if they saw something that they needed to go or they would go. Usually, you wouldn't have school level like teachers going to any VSBA. It would just be, you know, if it's legal, finance, certain things of that nature. I don't know. Is there a way for us to pull, pull that to see how many went to any VSBA conferences this year?
Yes. I think the clerk has access to be able to see that because they keep record of the award and doing awards for attending and stuff.
Okay. So, we can see. I was looking at you, Rob, because I figured you probably had a record of from the finance side if we paid a bill. So, but you'd be able to pull that and look at that?
Yeah.
Okay. But do you mind doing that and then maybe just sending that to the board? So, many people attended some VSBA trainings. Would that be?
I think that's fine. I think the only other question, and it came up last time we had this discussion, is our use of board docs through that membership, and that's something that we could purchase outside of VSBAs that.
So, we looked at that and I'm trying to remember what it was. I cannot remember if we could not purchase it or if it was just.
We could, it was just expensive.
Too expensive.
There are different costs.
It was a different cost.
It's expensive.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I couldn't remember. I couldn't remember. So, I'd have to, we'd have to go back and remember.
I remember exactly how it was expensive.
Yes, so.
So, what other staff is utilizing the VSBA training? I guess we're going to find that out, but I was never aware that staff was utilizing this. This is a school board association.
So, a lot of times, they do have other things where, you know, I can attend or assistant superintendent can attend or, you know, somebody can attend if there's a topic that is relevant.
But the conference?
No, no, not the conference. They can go, no, they don't. I guess we could have them.
It's supposed to be a superintendent.
Yeah.
But not this isn't, this is not where our teachers receive their training. And that's where a lot of the public has gotten confused is that they think if we discontinue this, that teachers are not going to get to continue their professional development. And this is not teacher professional development.
This is only for school management and support in those departments. So, maybe it's a Title IX training or maybe it's a, you know, an HR or, like I said earlier, finance or, I mean, you know, there's other things that we do attend that maybe they're not associated with in the VSBA. I know one of the big things in Virginia is the VASBO. That's a, Rob attends that, but that's for finance managers.
So, you would not be able to attend that for not the VSBA?
No, that's a different organization.
Right, yeah. So, there are still other organizations saying like I took my Title IX training and my FOIA training and my school law training, which their suggestion to get this book with the SBMA was very helpful. And with some of the issues that we're facing in our school district currently and the way that we didn't release public statement, didn't inform parents, that's all the way in which the VSBA encourages school board members to behave. And I know it's been incredibly valuable to me over the last two weeks to have the SBMA to rely upon. I'd love for you guys to join. It's an individual membership. It's a lot cheaper and they are very proactive, encouraging boards for what they can do instead of constantly reminding boards, oh, be scared, don't say that, be scared, don't say that, hide this, hide that. It's a very different perspective that things are done through. And then, I think it'd also be a good time to bring up and remind that even though we are VSBA members and we do pay extra to sign up for the trainings, if we remember, the VSBA has been quite vindictive towards me for the last year. I was excluded from the school law training through the VSBA because Stacy Haney is, doesn't like me and doesn't like what I've had to say about the VSBA. So, I was led to believe that I had registered for the training and rearranged my schedule and everything and then found out at the last minute that they had removed me. They didn't charge us, but they made sure and not notify me until I had been convenienced. And then, of course, during the delegate training, so the question and answer training, when I had asked a question, I, they ended the training 30 minutes early and then sent a letter of reprimand to you at your home.
Yeah, I was holding up.
To say how me asking questions threatens their 116 years of compliance where boards just go along and don't ask questions. So, with that said, obviously, I've put in a lot of work in to revise what our entire board has with revising and trying to get some of their lobbying positions changed. So, if we do remain a member, I would request that I be able to remain delegate so that I can see this through. The next date that I have for that is July 19th. So, we have, we voted to submit our lobbying changes. Their board, their section of this board, their lobbying positions board passed to review all the county submissions. And then, from there, I'm expected to appear on July 19th to argue our county's perspective to see if they will even consider allowing our ideas to be voted upon by the rest of the boards. I would say.
Is that in Charlottesville? Did it go to?
I believe that's good Charlottesville, yeah. I believe. I'm supposed to get more details because, I mean, we could end up having our ideas kicked out the very first round and not even have the opportunity to go down and argue it. It's a very complex process to make any changes within their organization. But if they're not going to be inclusive of hearing Warren County's ideas, then I would encourage us to, all right, we tried, let's just separate part ways. You're not hearing us. Of course, I was also excluded from the event down in Stanton because I had received permission. My husband was out of state for work and Stanton is a little ways away. I did not feel comfortable leaving my children home alone. And so, I had gotten permission to take them with me since the event was being held out of school. And then, I tried to mail my check, literally that they hadn't even gotten it yet. They never cashed it. I'm not trying to say that they did. But again, another inconvenience of having to stop paying them on a check. They contacted me to say that children were not allowed in Stanton schools who are not attending Stanton schools. So, we're asked for more details about that policy from the school system. The school system, of course, you know, all communication stopped. So, point being is, I get it that the VSBA believes me and it is what it is, but I would never want to stand in the way of you guys receiving training. But I would love for you guys to try some of the SBMA trainings and just kind of see the difference if it's something that you're ever interested in. Maybe we can table this until after the July 19th thing?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, yes, it's a work session item. I think our dues would.
Well, it's July 1st.
Our 2. But it's per, I think we talked about this before.
Last year.
And it's fine. I mean, you could, you know, the plan was to, you know, whatever the board kind of talked about today, if we were going to, it would be on the June 12th or July 12th meeting if the board wanted to vote on it at that time. That's why we're bringing it tonight to have the discussion, to let you know. And, you know, I think it'd be important to get how many staff members went to training. I can tell you, I didn't go to, I can't remember going to any VSBA trainings this year. So, it may be minimal. I mean, I can't tell you, I can only speak for myself unless Mr. Grant was able to find that information, but.
I'm really interested to hear, you know, how everything goes with the changes that we recommended.
Yeah.
Because I think, I know you've worked hard on that and I think, you know, those can be very valuable and great if they could hear that.
I was thinking the same thing because it is obviously a powerful lobby group. And I think, you know, all things considered, it may be a benefit to Warren County to have our voice heard in that group because it would be stronger than just us saying something. But I also get what you're saying, like if it's an all-star. But we can't be the only county who feels this way about these things. I mean, I feel like there's more counties in Virginia that are like us than that aren't. And so, I don't know why we couldn't have more of an influence in the VSB. Like logically, it seems like we could. So, that's my, that's kind of my thought about this.
And Steve, the structure, the structure of this organization is very odd. So, like we're each in our own region and each region has their director, chair, whatever you want to call it, appointed. And you have to really jump through a lot of their hoops and spend a certain amount of money with them and there's, you've got this whole huge process laid out. And like when, when I attended as the delegate, the meeting for voting on who the new chair was going to be, there was, I had asked who was being nominated, like in advance. I had asked and said, you know, hey, I want to look into this person. Like I want to know who we're voting for. And it's not a vote like an election. Like there's no second choice.
It wasn't available.
Right. I was not allowed to have the name in advance. I was scolded for my idea of researching them. I was told it was, this person was automatically chosen by their selection committee, which we have no coordinator who sits on their selection committee. And then, there was no like alternative. It was just you were told like this is who your person's going to be. Everybody who wants to vote yes, vote aye. And it was on a Zoom and I didn't vote aye. I just stayed silent and then tried to vote no, but then the whole thing was just over. So, it was not a very welcoming process. And yes, there are other counties. I expect that this will be the year that we will see other counties leave the VSBA now that there are alternatives popping up. And actually, there are alternatives popping up across the entire United States. There have been in many different states now, alternatives. Competition's a good thing, so. But yeah, I guess let's see how July goes.
We could push this off until August, the August meeting if you want.
Well, I mean, for me personally, the only reason to stay would be that we actually have a voice and we as a board are actually getting feedback from the VSBA and being heard because it wouldn't personally be a loss for me to, as a board member, because there are so many other trainings available. But if it works the way that it's meant to work and we actually have a delegate that brings information to us as a board and we can make suggestions that would be positive for Warren County, then that might be worth doing. I don't have a lot of hope in it because as Ms. Allen's already said, I did get a big, basically, tattletaling letter from the VSBA, which to me is not a professional organization that sends that type of mail to me, you know. And saying exactly what she said. She, she was a voice against them or asking questions and that was really frowned upon. So, that's. So, we'll bring it in August and just see what happens in July and.
Could we set for a work session in August since we don't have a July work session and I can report back like what, how things went on July 19th and?
Or you could just in your board comments.
Or during the, okay.
At August, tell us and then. If we need to bump it, we can still bump it.
Okay.
So, we're going to move on then from that. Next up, we have discussion on adding cameras in preschool and special needs classrooms. Before we start, just because everybody doesn't have access to this, our school division did not put out any sort of formal survey, but we did, as school board members and any of the board of supervisors also received it, a petition that was circulated from a local community member that did receive 130 signatures from local residents. And basically, the petition was showing support for cameras in our pre-K and special needs classrooms, of course, in an effort to increase safety and awareness of what's going on in the classrooms within our schools. So, we as a board just this evening want to talk about, of course, the pros. I think we hopefully can all see those and then hear what the cost of that will be, what process we need to go for to make that happen.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So, they got to 5% last year. It wasn't like the three that are up here that we totally modified the pay structure. And so, we went back in and had to build in to make sure that we could get down that 35%. And so, that was just a, you know, reflected here. So, we did catch that error pretty early and so, but that was changed to reflect that. So, just moving on down to where we're at. Our projected revenue is 72 million, 524, 408. Salaries and benefits, 61 million, 536, 183. And then, our nonlabor is just under 11 million at 10 million, 988, 225. And if we bring all the revenue in and have all those expenditures, that should zero us When we look at capital improvements, we still have, you know, the LFK project. So, a lot of that is still pending. So, funding project of 15 million, we still have all those funds. I know Mr. Smith and his team have been making sure that they're utilizing the PESR grants that are cycling out. So, that is still part of our budget for this next year because we should hopefully park in there by August. And I don't know, maybe if the board wants to at some point in time, go by and check out the new rooms that have been completed at LFK. They're really nice. They are really nice. They've done a really good job with them. And it's, it's a lot different and it is a very inviting atmosphere. And it's really student-child focused, so it's really nice. Also, in capital improvement, which you guys approved at the last board meeting, I believe, and I know Buck is getting that to the board supervisor. I know he talked to Dr. Daley about it the other day. But we did do an A and E for Evilson Morrison to start on that project. So, that would be part of our budget. And remember, those funds are coming out of the CIP funds that are held on the county side. So, that's not our operational, you know, that's not our bread and butter. Those are, those are other funds sitting out here in the wing. And then, we have that cooling tower that we need to get done and fill the jay. Mr. Helmer told me he might be able to squeeze one more year out of it.
Get through this summer.
You know, get through this summer. Okay, so not a full year. So, we will have to definitely do something with that cooling tower and how did HDP. And update our management system. I think that's the one that controls all of our heat and air. I know we got some calls yesterday about, you know, the air at, I think, the Skyline High School with the, that it was a little chilly. And so, you know, this would help us also updating that system will help us manage that thing a little better. But I know Mr. Helmer helped to address that problem yesterday, but that's what that management system does. It controls all of our schools' heat and air. So, we get down to our classifications. You can see that instruction, 54 million, 718, 958. Administration attendance and health, 2 million, 891. Oh, sorry, I'm reading off the wrong one. 55, 643, 093. 3377, 366 for administration and health. Pupil transportation, 3 million, 183, 179. Operations maintenance, 7 million, 327, 964. Food service, 3.919 million. Facilities and that facilities, that is where the LFK project stuff is because we have to account for that. And then, the debt service and the technology for a total of 23, 24 for a total of 89 million, And then, we also have our salary scales on here. Each year, we ask you guys to approve those. We did catch some errors with some dates and stuff that one of, some of them had 23, 34 on it. So we caught some of those typos and had to change some of those. But I think we're ready for the salary scales and our budget to be approved. Any questions on the budget?
If there are any questions, is there a motion on the budget?
I move that the fiscal year 2024 school board budget in the amount of 89 million, 583,540 dollars and the fiscal year 2024 salary scales be approved as presented.
Is there a second? Second? Any discussion?
Can we also ask if anyone has a comment on this?
Sure. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on the budget? All is in favor aye? Aye. Opposed no. Thank you. Thank you for all the work that everybody put into this budget. Thank you, Ms. Allen and Dr. Hall. Next, we're moving on to our work session items. First item is going to be the 23, 24 fee change proposal for Blue Ridge Tech. Mr. Gregg, are you presenting?
Yes, ma'am. Nice to see everybody. Very popular topic, increasing class fees. But the reason we're looking at this is simply just the cost of our instructional materials has increased pretty dramatically. The example that Ms. Baker provided was that a box of welding rods that we used a year or two ago was about $50. Right now, that same box costs us about $200. And across our trades and industry classes, we've seen the same sort of increase in materials that our kids use. So if you guys take a look at it, I think the greatest increase that's proposed, and you'll see is a $10 increase. And again, the goal there is to just put more materials in the, in the hands of our students so that they continue to get that firsthand experience when they sign up for our classes. I would also add that we have never turned a student away for an inability to pay any of these fees. And that's certainly not something that we would ever consider doing in the future. The, the sole goal is just to try to offset some of those increasing costs.
Any questions from Mr. Gregg? Thank you, Mr. Gregg.
Thank you.
So this will be on our agenda for our July meeting, correct? Which while we're talking about that, there is a date change on that. It's the 12th, correct?
It is the 12th.
Yes. Just while we're talking about our July meeting, we'll just mention that. Next up, we have the 23, 24 V S B A membership. Fly-arms are attached. As you all know, we have switched from our policy services with the V S B A and went with our own attorney through Sands Anderson. Basically dues are coming up due again. So this has been popped on our work session to just see what our general thoughts are with continuing membership with the V S B A. If there's any benefit that our school administration, school board members are receiving for training. Do you have that information? How many of our teachers are?
No, I do not have the information on how many attend V S B A trainings. You know, that would just be individual central office staff if they saw something that they needed to go or they would go. Usually you wouldn't have school level like teachers going to any V S B A. It would just be, you know, if it's legal, finance, certain things of that nature. I don't know. Is there a way for us to pull, pull that and see how many went to any V S B A conferences this year?
Yeah. I think the clerk has access to it and see, see that because they keep record of the award and do awards for attending and stuff.
Okay. So we can see, I was looking at you, Rob, because I figured you probably had a, had a record of, from the finance side, if we paid a bill. So, but you'd be able to pull that and look at that?
Yeah.
Okay. But do you mind doing that and then maybe just sending that to the board? So how many people attended some V S B A trainings? Would that be?
I think that's fine. I think the only other question, and it came up last time we had this discussion, is are you some board docs through that membership and that's something that we could purchase outside of V S B A? Is that?
So we looked at that and I'm trying to remember what it was. I cannot remember if we could not purchase it or if it was just.
You could, it was just expensive.
Too expensive.
There are other ones.
It was a different cost.
It's expensive.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I couldn't remember, I couldn't remember. So I'd have to, we'd have to go back and.
I don't remember the exact amount of those expenses.
Yes.
So what, what other staff is utilizing the V S B A training? I guess we're going to find that out, but I was never aware that staff was utilizing this. This is a school board association.
So, so a lot of times they, they do have other things where, you know, I can attend or assistant superintendent can attend or, you know, somebody can attend if there's a topic that, that is relevant.
Like the conference, but.
No, no, not the conference. They can go, no, no, they don't. I guess we could have them.
It's supposed to be permanent, but this isn't, this is not where our teachers receive their training. And that's where a lot of the public has gotten confused, is that they think if we discontinue this, that teachers are not going to get, to continue their professional development. And this is not teacher professional development.
This, this is only for school management and support in those departments. So maybe it's a Title IX training or maybe it's a, you know, an H R or like I said earlier, finance or, I mean, you know, there's other things that, that we do attend that maybe they're not associated with in the V S B A. I know one of the big things in, in Virginia is VASBO. That's a, we're all attend that, but that's for finance managers.
So you would not be able to attend that if we're not at the V S B A?
No, that's a different organization.
Right. Yeah. So there are still other organizations saying like I took my Title IX training, my FOIA training and my school law training, which their suggestion in this book with the S B M A was very helpful. And with some of the issues that we're facing in our school district currently and the way that we didn't release public statement, didn't inform parents, that's all the way in which the V S B A encourages school board members to behave. And I know it's been incredibly valuable to me over the last two weeks to have the S B M A to rely upon. I'd love for you guys to, to join. It's an individual membership. It's a lot cheaper and they are very proactive and encouraging boards for what they can do instead of constantly reminding boards, oh, be scared, don't say that, be scared, don't say that, hide this, hide that. It's a very different perspective that things are done through. And then I, I think it'd also be a good time to bring up and remind that even though we are V S B A members and we do pay extra to sign up for the trainings, if we remember, the V S B A has been quite vindictive towards me for the last year. I was excluded from the school law training through the V S B A because Stacy Haney is, doesn't like me and doesn't like what I've had to say about the V S B A. So I was led to believe that I had registered for the training and rearranged my schedule and, and everything and then found out at the last minute that they had removed me. They didn't charge us, but they made sure and not notified me until I had been convenienced. And then of course, during the delegate trainings, the question and answer training, when I had asked a question, I, they ended the training 30 minutes early and then sent a letter of reprimand to you at your home.
Yeah, I was having that up.
To say how me asking questions threatens their 116 years of compliance where boards just go along and don't, don't ask questions. So with that said, obviously I've put in a lot of work in to revise, well, our entire board has with revising and trying to get some of their lobbying positions changed. So if we do remain a member, I would request that I be able to remain delegate so that I can see this through. The next date that I have for that is July 19th. So we have, we voted to submit our, our lobbying changes. Their board, their section of this board, their lobbying positions board passed to review all the county submissions. And then from there, I'm expected to appear on July 19th to argue our county's perspective, to see if they will even consider allowing our ideas to be voted upon by the rest of the, the boards. I would say.
Is that in Charlottesville? Do you have to go to?
I believe I have to go to Charlottesville, yeah. I, I believe. I was supposed to get more details because I mean, we could end up having our ideas kicked out the very first round and not even have the opportunity to go down and argue it. It's a very complex process to make any changes within their organization. But if they're not going to be inclusive of hearing Warren County's ideas, then I would encourage us to, all right, we tried, let's just separate part ways if you're not hearing us. Of course, I was also excluded from the event down in Stanton because I had received permission. My husband was out of state for work and Stanton is a little ways away. I did not feel comfortable leaving my children home alone. And so I had gotten permission to take them with me since the event was being held out of school. And then after I mailed my check, literally that they hadn't even gotten it yet, they never cashed it, I'm not trying to say that they did, but again, another inconvenience of having to stop paying them on a check, they contacted me to say that children were not allowed in Stanton schools who are not attending Stanton schools. So when I asked for more details about that policy from the school system, the school system, of course, you know, all communication stopped. So my being is, I get it, the V S B A believes me. Eh, it is what it is, but I would never want to stand in the way of you guys receiving training. But I would love for you guys to try some of the S B M A trainings and just kind of see the difference if it's something that you're, that we're interested in. So maybe we can table this until after the July 19th thing?
Yeah. I mean, it's a, yes, it's a work session item. I think our dues would.
Well, it's what July 1 is.
Our two. But it's per, I think we talked about this before and like.
Last year.
And it's fine. I mean, you could, you, you know, the plan was to, you know, whatever the board kind of talked about today, if we were going to, it would be on the June 12th or July 12th meeting if, if the board wanted to, to vote on it at that time. That's why we're, we're bringing it tonight to have the discussion, to let you know. And, and yeah, I think it'd be important to get how many staff members went to training. I can tell you, I didn't go to, I, I, I can't remember going to any V S B A trainings this year. So it may be minimal. I mean, I, I can't tell you. I can only speak for myself unless Mr. Grant was able to find that information, but.
I'd be really interested to hear, you know, how everything goes with the changes that we recommended.
Yeah, me too.
Because I think, I know you've worked hard on that and I think, you know, those can be very valuable and great if they could hear that.
I was thinking the same thing because it is obviously a powerful lobbying group. And I think, you know, all things considered, it may be a benefit to Warren County to have our voice heard in that group because it would be stronger than just us saying something. But I also get what you're saying, like if, if it's an all-star. But we can't be the only county who feels this way about these things. I mean, I feel like there's more counties in Virginia that are like us than that aren't. And so I don't know why we couldn't have more of an influence at the V S B. Like logically, it seems like we could. So that's my, that's kind of my thought process.
And Steve, the structure, the structure of this organization is very odd. So like we're each in our own region and each region has their director, chair, whatever you want to call it, appointed. And you have to really jump through a lot of their hoops and spend a certain amount of money with them. And they're, they've got this whole huge process laid out. And like when, when I attended as the delegate, the meeting for voting on who the new chair was going to be, there was, I had asked who was being nominated, like in advance. I had asked and said, hey, I want to look into this person. Like I want to know who we're voting for. And it's not a vote like an election. Like there's no second choice.
It wasn't available.
Right. I was not allowed to have the name in advance. I was scolded for my idea of researching them. I was told it was, this person was automatically chosen by their selection committee, which we have no control over who sits on their selection committee. And then there was no like alternative. It was just, you were told like, this is who your person's going to be. Everybody who wants to vote yes, vote aye. And it was on a Zoom. And I didn't vote aye. I just stayed silent and then tried to vote no, but then the whole thing was just over. So it was not a very welcoming process. And, and yes, there are other counties. I, I expect that this will be the year that we will see other counties leave the V S B A now that there are alternatives popping up. And actually, there are alternatives popping up across the entire United States. There have been in, in many different states now, alternatives. You know, competition's a good thing. So, but yeah, I guess let's see how, how July goes.
We could push this off until August, the August meeting if you want.
Well, I mean, for me personally, the only reason to stay would be that we actually have a voice and we as a board are actually getting feedback from the V S B A and being heard because it wouldn't personally be a loss for me to, as a board member, because there are so many other trainings available. But if it works the way that it's meant to work and we actually have a delegate that brings information to us as a board and we can make suggestions that would be positive for Warren County, then that might be worth doing. I don't have a lot of hope in it because as Ms. Allen's already said, I did get a big, basically tattletaling letter from the V S B A, which to me is not a professional organization that sends that type of mail to me. You know? And saying exactly what she said. She, she was a voice against them or asking questions and that was really frowned upon. So that's. So we'll bring it in August and just see what happens in July.
Could we set it for a work session in August since we don't have a July work session? And I can report back like what, how things went on July 19th and?
Or you could just in your board comments.
Or during the, okay.
At August, tell us and then. If we need to bump it, we can still bump it.
Okay.
So we're going to move on then from that. Next up, we have discussion on adding cameras in preschool and special needs classrooms. Before we start, just because everybody doesn't have access to this, our, our school division did not put out any sort of formal survey, but we did, as school board members and any of the board of supervisors also received it, a petition that was circulated from a local community member that did receive 138 signatures from local residents. And basically the petition was showing support for cameras in our pre-K and special needs classrooms, of course, in an effort to increase safety and awareness of what's going on in the classrooms within our schools. So we, as a board, just this evening, want to talk about, of course, the pros. I think we hopefully can all see those and then hear what the costs of that will be, what, what process we need to go through to make that happen.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So I know Mr. Grant did pull some numbers and he has those available.
We all, everybody has.
Okay. So he did go out to see what the cost would be for cameras in the classrooms. And I would ask, do these include audio?
Yes, there is an add-on for the cameras that we normally purchase. This will go into our system that we currently use. I talked to our tech that normally handles the cameras and the installation. And he said that it is possible to set these cameras to have only administrative access so we can set like higher levels of access. For example, we could set it just for only the principal and only the central office to view. And then others that, for example, sometimes we. And then others that, for example, sometimes we have for hallway cameras and things like that. Sometimes secretary will have those, so they would not have access to that. It would just be through the software that we use. It could be locked down to higher levels. That's-
And so when, when thinking about cameras in the classroom, so when I was in Oklahoma, I had cameras in all my classrooms. And, yeah, here in Virginia, there is no law that stipulates that you can't have them in advisory. But what you, you do need to consider is, as far as when, when visiting with, with the attorney, just to get from the legal side of things, so that you have that perspective as a board. You know, you are creating student records and how to manage those student records. And so you also would have to remember that for a special education student, that record may have to be kept for many years if it's part of them meeting their goals. And so we'd have to have long-term storage plans possibly for some of that. And I know you have that in, in West Virginia, so I don't know if that goes into that or not. That was just one of the things that, that was brought up by the attorney. And then, of course, you know, the, when you create the, you know, it is a FERPA. So since it's a record, then, you know, you are creating many student records. And then if there's a request for a student record, you may have to provide that. And then all the other students, so, you know, what I'm saying is that whatever we do, or whatever you decide to do, we're going to have to have, if you want to go with cameras, we're going to have to have a pretty detailed outline policy that will follow some pretty strict guidelines and restrictions to access or processes, storage. There, there are a lot of things in here that, from the attorney's standpoint, they said, we really would need to dive in and consider what some of the ramifications could be and have to think about those ahead of time. So, I know also, yeah, if, there's, there's also that possibility. And I know Tim works hard, but, you know, could there be a possibility that some of those videos get posted out on the internet too? So, I mean, but, you know, that, that's just something, if we, we have good security and we do our thing, that, that could be protected as well. That was just one other thing that they brought up. You know, I know, you know, some of our special needs students, sometimes, you know, they, they may- be closed sometimes, and so then you would have that record, which in some instances could be considered, you know, job pornography or something of that nature, see if it's video. But I think we would have to work through that with our attorney to make sure that nobody is viewed. How is that viewed and how is that stored? That was just one of the things I know that was brought up from the special ed side of the attorney. So we're, you know, we've worked with two different attorneys, one from the special ed, one from the regular, just regular attorney. But I think whatever we decide to do, I'm not opposed to cameras in the classroom at all. I think that, you know, from my experience where I had them in Oklahoma, it was, it was actually a good thing to have. But I think whatever we do, there needs to be a good quality policy that really outlines in detail.
Makes me into-
Yes.
Multiple options.
Yes ma'am.
Privacy options and-
Yes.
And some storage.
It has to-
Yes.
In all of the laws of storage that you haven't yet determined, how long would we typically plan to keep video storage of classroom?
So, Tim, our system right now stays on there for 30 days. But when you talk to Ms. McDonald, that, when, when speaking to, to the attorney, we may have to keep that for, how long did they say?
Even given exactly a year, he said years, years for student records.
And that was just from, from the special ed side. So, so, you know, we need to, we will need to dive deeper into those things from the attorney's side to see just how long those records would need to be kept. And then we'd have to come up with a way for them to be stored.
Do we know if there are any other schools in Virginia that have cameras in their classrooms?
And would this be something, since like one of our neighboring states has policies, could we collaborate with them to, you know-
I did mention that West Virginia had a law.
Learn from them.
And so, so Mr. King was going to research that law and to, to review that in a little more detail.
That would probably make a difference, because they probably say, is it a student record or not? And how long you have to keep it, like if the law said that, that would be nice.
Why not utilize our neighbors and have some good conversations and learn, learn from what they've already put together?
But I don't know if we have a school board to declare it is or isn't. I mean, I guess we'll see from our lawyer, but general-
So, the 10 classrooms, I know, so where are all those classrooms? I know the, how many are pre-K, how many would be K? Do we have an estimate, or is that just 10 thrown out there?
So that would be, you pointing out Shamika to ask her? I couldn't tell, Tim said it is.
So we have two pre-K classrooms at Hilda, and one at L S K. Ressi has three. And E Wilson has two.
And Scott, I still have to say that's gone.
So are we thinking right now, like, something just to start in pre-K?
Now, I thought we were going to get quotes for-
Well, you can add to, so that number is, so that 1,290.75?
12,000.
No, the 1,200? That's per classroom, so just however many classrooms, multiply that by that.
Put 10 out just for-
I put 10 because that's, we knew those 10 preschool classrooms, but we're not real sure about the special ed, how many.
Yeah, and, and that would be a lot of questions, like how would you determine? Would it be self-contained only? Would it be, you know, I think there's a, like, that's another whole set of questions as well, determining which classrooms it could be there.
Yeah, or should we put it on, maybe additionally on classrooms where the teacher's on a performance improvement plan? Is this 1,290.75 per year, or is this a one-time cost?
That's a one-time fee.
So there wouldn't, as far as we know, be an ongoing cost accepted necessarily?
No, we do have licensing, but licensing is life of the camera.
And what's the like?
We've had cameras for 10, 12 years before they, you know, detail.
Is, is this just one camera per classroom, or does this somehow angled, there's multiple, or we would-
Uh, this is one, one camera per class, and they're pretty, they do a pretty good job of getting a wide shot.
Do we know what the audio would be like? If he says we don't always have audio, like, could attach audio from across the room? Do we know?
Uh, yeah, I haven't, I haven't done any of the- The only thing I know is about the cameras, because we use them, but we haven't used the audio yet.
Yeah, they're different. The audio's going to be, you know, it'll be fairly clear, but it also depends upon, you know, the ambient noise in the classroom, what's going on, and then, you know, the distance to the camera. I mean, the, you know, the further away you are, the less you're going to probably hear. You know, the closer you are to the mic, the, the clarity will increase, so, yeah.
Would it, I mean, there's a lot of things to consider, but would it go off at like night after school's over? So if that teacher has parent-teacher conferences that evening?
So no, most of it-
How does that work?
So most of the time, they're motion censored, so they're, they're going to, you know, you're going to see a still picture, but once motion comes in, then the camera wakes up. And then it's going to start recording. And then after that, you know, whatever it is leaves the field of view, then it's going to, after so many seconds, stop until something re-triggers it. So you can't turn them off during parent-teacher conferences, because there will be people in there having those conversations. And I think all that ran out of Ressis, that'd be ran out of Ressis, right?
Yes.
So it's not controlled at the school level, because it's all housed in one building, or technician building.
That's just triggered by motion though. Couldn't you just, for parent-teacher conference, just get permission to block the camera? So it doesn't re-trigger? So we're not having to store all that extra data?
I mean, I guess there could be a way to cover it. I don't know if, if, if it would pick up on the audio and be recording audio only, so, you know, so that's, that's one thing.
Well, if it's like, it's like any other security camera, you put something up in front of it, you block it, it's going to record for however long it's set to record for, nothing moves. It's not going to, it'll shut itself off, and then it'll just be, that'll be that.
No, I agree with you. All I'm saying is that we would need to check, because sometimes if the audio will wake it up. Not just the, not just the video, but if the audio, if it, if that, something enters through that mic, if that wakes it up, we would have to check with the company to make sure. I don't know about that, so.
I'm not sure either.
Most of the time, all the, you know, when I have dealt with the, with the cameras, it has been, if something came in the field of view, you know, it started, and you could hear audio. So, you know, I never tried taping it up and just seeing if audio caused it to, to continue to record. That would be something that we'd have to talk to the manufacturer about. But, yeah, I mean, you could definitely do that. If the audio doesn't set it off, where it starts recording.
I'd like to see them in the special needs areas as well. And any of the-
Although I do think, I mean, maybe we could start in some, since it's a new thing. And if it's only a one-time cost, maybe we do the first month, then, then see what goes or something. Before we buy like 100.
See if we like, right, if we like those cameras before we expand. But yeah, I think, I think this is definitely a path I would like to see us move down.
Yeah, certainly, it's not going to be cost prohibitive. I mean, I thought it was going to be much more pricey to do it. Nothing that you're saying from Mr. King, I don't feel like is a hurdle that we can't get over. I think the timeline is going to be probably our, our biggest crunch, because of our requirement to have three readings for policy approval. So what kind of timeline we can get that policy put in place and started on readings and get the cameras going.
And with the detail, right, so.
So I can reach out, I can reach out to Legal tomorrow and tell them that we would like them to start looking or creating a policy. And that we would like that be able to have a first reading by June, or July 12th. Keep saying June 12th, but July 12th. And then that way, your first reading would be then, second reading August, and then at the work session would be your third reading.
Just after school started, but close.
Yeah. And, and I think, you know, it wouldn't be, I don't think it would be anything that would, could stop from starting an installation of things. It's just you could leave them unplugged until the policy, you know, you can, you could go ahead and get everything set up, but we could just leave them unplugged until the policy's done and, and everybody says, we're good to go.
And the expectation and the training for staff and everything, you know, so that everybody is aware of everything.
Yeah, I think in addition to those policies that you've mentioned, we also want to think about our expectation for their use by principals or administrators, so we don't just leave it like, here it is, if you want to use it, you know, like have some guidance.
Yes.
Just our expectations.
And, and that is important. You know, when I was, when I did have my cameras in Oklahoma, and I, a lot of times when you go do a teacher evaluation and, and you walk in the classroom and you get 15 hugs, the teacher's up there teaching a lesson, and all these little kids are running over wanting to hug you. Well, so you interrupt the lesson. Well, what I did is I would just tell my teacher, I'm going to log on to the camera at this time, and I will watch your lesson, so I'm not interrupting. And it was a pre-K classroom. And so I was just able to sit at my desk, I had my form, I logged in, and I was able to hear her and see her do her lesson. I logged off when I told her I would. And then when she came over for lunch, she came in and we had a little conference right then and there. And just assess the evaluation, so, for the observation. But, but that allowed me not to interrupt the classroom and still be able to do an effective evaluation. So that is how, you know, I've, I've used it in the past, that way. But, yeah, I agree, you can't be, you know, logging in just to-
Well, and I think we need to be consistent. If we decide that that's how we want it to be used as an option for principals, then, you know, that can be an option, but I would want it to be consistent, not-
Yes ma'am.
You know, some principals do it, some principals don't, and I would-
Or they never look at it.
Right, or a requirement for them, I mean, yeah, there's a lot of details, I think, that would easily put together. Just takes a little bit of legwork.
And tweak it and change things as we go, when we see correct validity of views?
Can I ask, Dore, have you gotten any comments from constituents against this idea? I haven't, but-
No, I was actually going to say that same thing. I've heard a lot of support.
Heard anybody with concern that we should be considering.
The only concern that I have heard was when somebody thought that it was going to be like with some of the daycares, where the parents can just log in on their phone and be able to look up. And I said, no, 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 it's not going to be like that, and, and so then they were fine with it, so.
I would be great about that, yeah, getting it on the internet.
Yeah, we still have to respect everybody's privacy and-
Yeah, and each individual student record.
Right.
So, and, and it may be that we also have to purchase some sort of program where you can, you know, blur out different students if there's a need or a parent requests a record of, and, you know, the time it would take to blur out all of those kids throughout that length of, of time would be something that you, we would want to consider too, because you can't give student records of, if one student took another parent's- Right. So, you know, that would be something that you would need to consider as well. So.
So we can expect to see a first reading, a first draft of a policy for July 12th?
Well, I will talk to the attorney, and, and Buck, if you don't mind, putting that down so we can, because I know Buck's the policy guy. And I have, just while we're on this, I have talked to Brad a little bit about going ahead and setting up our dates and times to start reviewing and editing our policies and moving forward with our policies. So I've had those conversations already. So this would just be something that we would ask him to probably jump ahead on. And he may want to have some discussion concerning the goals and the outlines, and, you know, he may, you know, we'll have to have the conversation with him first, so, but we will have that tomorrow.
And can we also get recommendations from you and your cabinet as far as what we're talking about with how their, how the video would be used? I mean, I don't think that would come from Brad.
No.
He would have to look at it, but like, I would want that to come from you and your staff.
Yeah, and, and I think, yes, and we can discuss that. Really, we, we need to keep a tight, tight lid on it as far as access, so, so-
But we also want to make sure it's doing what we're expecting.
What it's supposed to do, yeah. And it may only be that we, we only grant access to two or three people to start out. Because I know a lot of times, when we need video, we call Tim, and Tim either has, I think it's Chris usually that does the video. Chris German goes in and pulls all the cameras and tracks things, and, so, you know, and it may be that we just say, okay, right now, it's just going to be Tim and Chris that would have access to any of the video. Because if we need to see something, we can ask them, and then they can pull it, and then we can view. So unless, as the board, you're saying, okay, we want it to be viewed once a month periodically.
I think that's something to think about.
Right, because that's how you're all saying.
That's how we are, it has to be, so, so with document.
Yes.
So I think we, we-
Periodically might be nice. I mean, more effective tool if we're checking it with us.
And then we would want to do, you know, okay, who, okay, we'll, we'll talk about that, and we'll, we'll bring some options about how often to, to review it, who to have access, and things of that nature, so.
I'd agree.
We'll bring just a lot of, a plethora of ideas. So we'll bring just a lot of, a plethora of ideas.
Should we work session this first before your first reading? Or, I mean, I know there is a time constraint, but I mean, we have a lot of choices to make as far as.
It doesn't mean that we have to even count that necessarily. I mean, we might still bump it for an additional three, but we don't have, we won't have a work session again until the middle of August. So I think at least hearing kind of what the ideas are, then we can think about it, think of our questions and then go from there.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds right. Again, there's something on your mind.
Right, yeah. Anything else anybody's thinking about this right at this moment? I think there's a lot, a lot of work to work on here.
Excited to come up with it.
Yep, me too.
Yeah, thanks for getting these instruments on pretty short notice. Appreciate it.
So what I may go ahead and do, because I think we have a little bit of funding right now, just how quick can we get those in?
Depends on stock. We just looking at the ten cameras or more?
So I know it would depend because right now with the ten, it's under the threshold of fifteen, right?
Yes.
Okay. If we get over that threshold, do we have to do something a little bit different now? Because we're, we're over the $15,000 mark. So I, I would start with the ten right now.
Okay. I would say a week, week and a half.
Yeah, we could actually go ahead and purchase them and get them on site. Things of that, and while we're working.
So we're ready to go whenever we have the.
Well, that's the thing, you want to go ahead and do the work over the summer, but like I said, just keep them unplugged until.
Yeah.
Until the policy's done and you guys have said, here's our stamp.
I like that idea.
So, and then after, you know, you, you can actually increase it every year if you say, okay, now we're going to move to K. Now we want to move to one. Now we want to move to two. However, however the board wants to do that, I mean, that's, but again, that's a lot of, you know, you got to remember, we're also probably going to be expanding in other areas too, as far as hardware and software and things of that nature.
Did you have a question?
Yes ma'am, I have a question. Is there any way that we could put out like a survey to the staff, maybe special education and preschool teachers for now, to, to see what they're thinking about or maybe invite them to come speak on July twelfth, July 12th at like the community participation portion? Just as I know some teachers may not be looking at the board docs because it's summer. And so see what their, what they're thinking is and see if they have any recommendations as well, moving forward with the policy discussion.
And they're certainly absolutely welcome to come and speak at our community participation. That'd be a great time. And they can also reach out to us as board members, always email us, call us. And then Dr. Valder, if you could, maybe as you're collecting, just the, well, I know you'll be touching the release of seals and you'll be talking to.
Yeah, so, so we do. Doug's good at surveys, so Doug, do you mind starting a good survey for us?
Sure.
And, and share that, we can all collaborate. Doug, Doug does a great job with surveys, so. He, he does a good job in other areas too. But, but yes, so.
Okay. And one of the things too, you know, I'm sure that there's a lot of nerves that's, you know, that's, that's scary to think about as a classroom teacher. But I think the more detailed we are and transparent with what the expectations and procedures will be, that, that will help everybody understand, you know, what that role is to have those in place. And that, you know, will take a lot of just gathering of all that information and putting it together, but I don't think we can be overly detailed or too detailed on it. So, and I think that'll help settle a lot of questions too, because, you know, whether you're a classroom teacher or a building principal, you know exactly what the expectation is and what that role and that process and procedure is.
And I really think this could protect our teachers too. I mean, if they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, it can be confusing if your whole classroom is four-year-olds and the child is saying something, we don't know what to think. Well, now we can look at the video and say, the teacher was doing what they're supposed to be or they were not doing what they were supposed to be. So I don't think, I hope our, our staffs wouldn't see this as punitive, because I think this can also protect them.
Right.
Absolutely. And, and my staff, when I was in Oklahoma, they didn't have an issue with it. And, and I know you have it in West Virginia now where you are.
It was, it was, you know, it's a little scary at first because it's, you have all these ideas and thoughts, but I mean, it's gone through fine.
Right. And, and the thing is, I mean, that's the thing about a camera. People will at first, once it's in there, they will think about it, but after three months, they forget the camera's in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and it's just, you know.
And I think if we all knew how many times truly in a day we were videoed, just driving in our car, walking in and out of a store, we would all be amazed, because we are probably on it a lot more than any of us ever know.
Well, thank you. We'll move on to staff development requirements and certifications.
So I provided you both policies, two policies. One is the child abuse and neglect. The second one is policy GC L R. It's a regulation actually, and it's professional staff development opportunities. This is just something for you to, as a board, to consider. Various states have various requirements. I can tell you when I was in Oklahoma, we had to do child abuse and neglect every year. We also had to do bloodborne pathogens every year. We also had to do CPR training every year. So, so those three requirements were required by us each year as educators in Oklahoma. I know in Virginia, you, you have to have it to get your license. So I think whatever requirements that we, we want to have, then those should be reflected in policy. You know, we, we did have a, we do have a handbook that we put together, it gets sent out a little bit late last year, probably after some of the, I think, well, it got sent out in August 7th, I believe is when it got sent out. But, you know, we are changing, updating that. We are going to send that out to administrators here in July, so that they can have their school handbooks along with that one. But I think whatever we need to add, we add that and we make sure it's in policy.
The teacher handbook, does that have? The way that we get our student handbooks and there are lots of forms that we sign for, we understand that, we acknowledge the photos, we agree to counseling this, these different things. Is there something that they're signing that, that there is a checklist that they're going through, they receive? So if we make a policy, but then we don't really have something that says they did it or acknowledge that they did it, or somebody's confirming that they did it, then the policy is not effective.
Correct, no, and I agree. And so, you know, we looked at, and I don't know, I know Jody was here, but they had a, Jody, Jody attended a training to where he was looking at ways to electronically certify that, yes, you attended this.
We got to our last, their last meeting.
Yeah. And then Dr. Funk filled us with what she had, and I think that they were also looking at frontline. I don't know, did anybody else attend that?
I did attend it. So in frontline, he is able to outline all of the PD that teachers need to complete and he will be provided a checklist if those procedures have been completed, those modules. And it'll store their PD and certificate in.
And that can then be accessed by you, this superintendent?
Yeah, I, I think I have.
The building, the building principal. I'm just, I'm just seeing like who's checking.
So, so, so.
So there could be a deadline and the building principal figures.
Yeah, so, so. Building administrators, HR definitely has access to it. I'm sure I have access to it. You know, so, so yes, I mean, they, they could then verify and have a conversation with. Now, now I would say that with, with some of our trainings, you know, like before anybody steps foot in a, in a classroom, they would need to, to complete the child abuse neglect. I mean, if it's a, you know, within, if it's within a 12-month period or outside of a 12-month period, then they would have to, to take it.
Yeah, I think every year, like you were saying, all those things to do with basic safety of our students. And I can't imagine they're long, right? It's not like a six-week or some child abuse neglect.
No, so, so for my administrative, for my administrative trainings that I do in the summer during the, my retreat, DSS does come in, they take an hour, sometimes an hour and a half, depending upon the conversation. But it's an in-person training and they, they give that to the administrative staff that they, they have said that they would go into the schools. Then you have the, there's a virtual model with the Department of Education and it's about a 90-minute. So, you know, you have a virtual option there, but you also have the in-person option. So you're looking at 90 minutes.
I think we need to have that every year. I think we all agree on that.
So those are things that you could look at.
So realistically, would that be, I mean, do you think that one of these policies or the other, would be a better place to put that? I mean, I, I guess if we're going to include other things besides child abuse, it shouldn't go in the child abuse policy.
Well, yeah, I think that any required trainings, that's why I gave you the professional, professional staff development opportunities. I think that any, any required trainings, we just make another heading and say required trainings yearly. And they're listed there. So that it's, it's in that policy and then we can cross-reference to other policies. So.
I'd like that and I'd be interested to know if there's any others. I mean, I know you just mentioned three, kind of off the cuff here, but, but again, you and your cabinet, are there any others that teachers need to be doing every year? You don't have to answer right now, but, you know, as we look at reviewing these, you know, let's really be thoughtful and make sure we're not overlooking something else that really our teachers need to add as like a baseline to protect the safety of our students.
Well, and I know also, you know, it's Ms. McDonald's goal to have every staff member trained in man. Not every staff member is trained in man currently, but she's working hard and I know she's getting trainers at each of the schools. And, and that would be a goal to have a trainer or every staff member in every school be trained. So I, I think that's a long-term goal. I think once we get a lot of staff members trained, then you could probably say.
Maintain it.
Maintain, yes. So I think looking at some of those that, that we see it. And we could definitely talk about that in cabinet as far as, you know, when, when you look at the, the handbook that we created from the division, those were some of the things that we said, hey, staff really need to focus on these areas. And, and that's why we put it in that handbook. You know, and it, it deals with a lot of other things, you know, how to, how to put in lead, how to, you know, staff members just need to know those things. And so we try to put the, the frequently asked questions and/or things that we thought were, were needed in that handbook last year.
Well, and then can we also add something that requires every employee to sign the mandatory reporter acknowledgement? I was, I was looking through the policy, policies. Thank you, Tim, for printing this for me. I saw we have a requirement, we have a policy that requires that all employees sign an acknowledgement form for alcohol and drug-free workplace. And actually, may people sign that or not, but we have a policy that says we do. So I would think that at least, you know, with what's happening, we, we need to make sure that every person inside that school knows that they are a mandatory reporter, what a mandatory reporter is. And then also, I'd like to see somewhere where there is a more clear, maybe not through the policy, but through the handbook, a very clear step-by-step process for making the report. And I know, obviously, we discovered that the policy that we have where it says the school board and local department of social services have adopted a written interagency agreement, we don't have that. Now that is before, every, predates everybody. It predates you, it predates the department of social services, it predates, it's not on any of us, but now that we've realized we don't have this interagency agreement, that, that's a big problem. So we need to get that in place.
I did speak with Dr. Bailey the other day. He said that they didn't find anything on their side, that he would get with the county attorney to start looking at writing something up.
Yeah, and I.
So, so, so he and I have, have connected on that.
Right, yeah. And so we're at that place that I think like really clear, who, who do you tell? What, what do you expect once you tell them? You know, are you, everybody needs to know who they go to, what the specific process is. And then I know we, we talk a lot about criminal child abuse, but then there's also just unprofessional behavior that is not criminal, but is certainly a red flag and.
Should also.
Should also be reported and documented in some official means that is like we were talking about with the cameras. Very clear, right, very clear expectations of you do this, 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 and this, you expect this back. I think if we, I know we're kind of skipping into the next thing with the website links, but putting a direct DSS portal link on our website that like a lot of the other school districts have. So that way, if an employee feels like they reported it to their superior but didn't get the reaction that they wanted, then they can easily go in and report, they can report anonymously and get the, you know, confirmation back saying that, that they, that they did. I just, I think there, there are areas that we can get this cleaned up.
I think that's important, what you said with who to report to and who to go to next, but then also what is the timeline that you're expecting some sort of resolution or follow-up or nothing happened, you see it again, okay, well then now you need to move on to the next person.
Right, where you escalate off the chain.
Not getting results, so keep going.
Don't give up. Yes, yeah, don't give up. And then also not fearing retaliation for going up the chain of command. But yeah, if in reviewing, it's what section G, the personnel stuff, like if we're going to have, move forward with these policy service reviews, I think this is the, the letter we start with, because there are, there are a lot of areas in here that we can improve on and clarify and support our staff better, support our students better by supporting our staff better. I mean, I just, I know, like, I don't think I've got to raise time right now, but I've got my section G flagged, so.
I would definitely agree. And I think with what you're, what you're saying about the reporting, you know, I absolutely agree, we should make that as easy as possible. And I would also include, and you kind of touched on this, but just be clear about what that is. Like what does this look like? What does unprofessional behavior look like? What does child abuse look like? So that people aren't wondering, I don't know, what I saw, was it okay? Was it not okay? Like, again, make it as clear and easy as we can. And I agree with you also about policy G. One of the things I've been thinking about is our review process, like I was saying, for with teachers that are on a plan of improvement, maybe we could tighten that up or, I mean, because even if it's just classroom management or just a teacher who is not effective at teaching, I don't want my child in that classroom with a teacher who is not effective at teaching. You know, that's a waste of time. And if I don't want my child there, I don't want any child there. So we need to have, make sure that we have a policy in place for teachers that are not up to expectations, that we don't just leave it or just say, we'll check back in a month or.
And if we have a teacher who is on a plan of improvement, do we get a policy in place that says that, hey, if the aide is also on a plan of improvement, should we keep them together? Or should we at all times have some adults that is not on a plan of improvement? And then also, I'd like to clarify too, through our policy, how, what the parent rights are and how a parent can file an official complaint. Because I'm finding out, it's like making a phone call or just sending an email is not really considered a specific complaint. And we do have, it's GBLA-R, where it talks about third-party complaints against employees, but it states that for it to actually count as a complaint, the parent has to file it in writing, they've got to use this form, they've got to, like it has to. They've got to, like, it has to do this very specific process. And I don't think, I, I mean, as a parent, like, I, I probably call a teacher or call a parent, like, if I was gonna call him, I'm not gonna know that I have to go dig to file a complaint form. And then if there are complaints against a teacher and teacher's put on a plan of improvement and there are some unprofessional occurrences happening in the classroom, I think parents have a right to know that. Um, you know, maybe your child wasn't criminally abused, but your child was mistreated and.
Or your child's teacher's on a plan of improvement, here are the steps that we're taking and here's what you can expect.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I would want to know.
Yeah. So.
I'm sure there's also personnel issues, so I don't know what we can say, but that's what I would like to be able to do.
There are personnel issues.
That's the only thing I was thinking of, right? There's probably some personnel thing that we have to work through with that too.
Let's just, uh, stay in our dreams here in this work session.
But you know, at some point in time, like where does that line get drawn, like?
Cause a student has rights to.
They do, and the parents have rights and frankly, like if you are concerned about your personnel privacy, then maybe don't mistreat the child. And then you won't have to be told upon to the parents, but I think you have a right to know. So.
So what I'm hearing here is that we're gonna look at, um, some of the online tracking for what are gonna be our mandatory, courses every year to go through, um, updating the handbook to include something that basically just like the student handbook, where we're checking off that we understand when mandatory reporters have that signed and ready.
So, so one of the questions I wanna kind of verify is that, you know, if, are you gonna have them, you know, if they can go in frontline and check off that, yes, I took this training, that would be a verification that, that they took it. Uh, or if they get a certification, uh, you know, we also, or do we wanna say, well, we want you to have a signed acknowledgement, uh, because, you know, you don't wanna have, took it, I have my certification, I'm also signing this, I'm also having to go click on, you know, I, yeah, I think.
I don't know enough.
Just one thing.
I think, I think, I will, I will just want to make clear what, what, what kind of.
I would think the acknowledgement, I have for myself, um, just to teach gymnastics. If I was going into a facility, it was a one-page thing saying this is what a mandatory reporter is, this is what the, and I mean, they have samples on the DSS website. Um, it's just a one-page thing and you sign it once at the start of your employment and that's that as far as the acknowledgement goes, because that acknowledgement applies to your cafeteria workers, your, um, everybody, anybody inside the school. And that should be when, like, you know, even when we went in and had to be fingerprinted and background checked, the note, do you want health insurance? Where do you want your paycheck to go? That should be a part of the hiring process as far as I'm concerned. Like, hey, you work for a school system, do you know that you're a mandatory reporter? Do you know what that is? Here's your sheet, you read it, you sign it, it goes in your file and that's that.
And then, so if we had something in place where through the hiring process, that was exactly what you were saying, and then yearly, like an online certificate that, yes, they've completed that training every year, because I think that is something everybody can hear every year. Um, you know, I'm starting my twenty-fifth year in education now and I have sat through twenty-five years of, almost twenty-five years of every year. And that would, so you have your initial acknowledgement, but then that yearly, yep, I did that one hour online training, there's my certificate. Cause that can all be stored, um, hopefully through frontline or something like that electronically. And it's very easy to access, you know, by such-and-such date. All the administrators have to make sure that everybody in their building has completed it, there you go.
Yeah, I would rather have it as the online module or the in-person, like you were talking about. My concern with the signature, I mean, I see what you're saying, but, you know, if you get hired and you sign these twenty-five things, like, have you really read them? Probably not. Do you remember them? Probably not. But if it's the online module, like, you know, they have those little required quiz questions or whatever, like, what would you do here? Or drag little thing, like all those, you know, somewhat annoying trainings that I have to do for my job annually as well. But if they do make you interact with the material, they do remind you of what's in there, you might be thinking, I already know this, I've done this twenty-four times before, but it's reminding you of it and it does change. I'm sure there's different things in here than there were twenty years ago.
So we would be expanding that training to every single person inside of this school or we're just talking about like?
I would say every.
It could be, it could be every single person. I mean, it could be cafeteria, you know, every single person in the school.
Yeah, I've already talked to DSS about adding it to their suite for training. Uh, I talked to Ms. Barnes last week, I believe she was in, or maybe it was the week before. Uh, but I talked to her about wanting to add, add some trainings. And so, we're gonna give her, uh, start adding that. Add some additional, so. But, so, I mean, as far as the clarification, just, I know we, we, you want us to just put some things down?
I think we're all on the same page with the electronic version.
Yes, we're on, on the same page with the electronic. And, I mean, we could do in the hiring process, we give them a new sign this and then they still go through a training, then they still have to log in to, to say that they viewed it. I mean, you know, the hiring process thing's gonna be one time. But it's the annual verification is what I feel is important. That they're going online and saying, I did this today.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that we can have like SEDEXO employees do this yearly training thing. If we can, then obviously that, that they'll figure out if they're a mandatory reporter during that.
As part of, of our stuff with, with SEDEXO, we can tell that this is what we'd want as far as if they're coming on our school, on school property. Because really, truly, you know, your janitors should be watching out for that as well, your cafeteria workers.
Every single person.
Every single person that sits in the building. So, so we are looking at it from an electronic standpoint, but I feel, and it's just my, my, my thoughts, again, we'll do whatever the board wants to do. Is that you go ahead and you have it yearly, but have the staff certify through frontline the date and the time that they took it with a verification. And I don't know, do they, can they sign? Cause the checks go through.
The end up happening is with frontline, you can do all type, different types of trainings. There will be an email that will go out to you as an employee or a new hire that will identify, these are the tasks that you need to complete, um, by such-and-such date. And so, you simply just go on there, whatever the task is, one task, assign your contract. And so, some other tasks, you just go on and you can complete the training. And once you check off that you finished it, then it will come back to our system, it will identify who's done it and who's not. So, it's.
So this is before they set foot in the classroom.
Can we be, could we do those annual trainings? I mean, I think that would be helpful for us to see what they're seeing and also honestly, we're in the buildings too, so why wouldn't we also have that training?
Yeah, I'm sure you can, you know, go to any.
Make us do it if we're making them do it.
Man, I don't have a problem. You can come to, uh, what day are we having it at the administrative retreat, Ms. McDonald?
I believe it's on the twelfth.
On the twelfth?
Yes.
So, you're more than welcome to come to the July twelfth, that's the day we have a board meeting, that's gonna be my retreat.
It is the eleventh.
The eleventh?
Yeah.
Correction, it's the eleventh. Uh, and, uh, you know, come in and get the training with, with us, with the administrators, because this will be, this is something I do every year with my admin. And, uh, so, but then we can, you can work with the school, if you wanna go to a specific school, just get in touch with the, uh, principal. I would, you know, just replace that, you can touch with them. Ask them when the training is scheduled and you can go out and do it as well.
I think, and Ms. Lowry, I think was asking, you know, the online modules that they're gonna be doing, we have access to that?
So, so you can just go to, that's on the VDOE website. You can go to licensure, there's actually, I believe, two different modules in there.
Yeah, I, I can send you a link, it's the statutory requirements that teachers, uh, would have in order to get their license. And there's multiple different modules, I can send you the link to that, you can go through, you can get. Some, some obviously are the child abuse neglect recognition trainings, other dyslexia awareness. There are some more specific to like a, a particular subject, such as like there's a history, a civics module, uh, for history teachers and those type of things. But I can send that, and that link out to you, you can explore that.
Yeah, we can send that to you and let you look at it. You can definitely go through it.
Well, yeah, I would wanna know, like, which ones are we requiring them to do so that we know what they know?
Anything else on this for the evening? So we can kind of, and again, like, some of the stuff we can do immediately with the training as teachers are coming back, but some of the policy updates, we're gonna have that same sort of lifetime of three readings and the camera one is.
Well, now, I will correct, so, so some of these may be a regulation is you don't have to have the readings.
Right.
Um, we, you know, I, that, that is an administrative regulation, I can make those changes, I can inform the board of the changes and then it's implemented. Also, policy, we do three readings, but policy only requires two. So, I think it's just always been the practice here to do three readings, but I believe policy only requires two readings.
That may have come from doing a reading at the main meeting and then discuss at the work session and then action at the main meeting.
Maybe, yes. And I know we kind of kept, kept with that, because we didn't want to approve policies at a work session if the community couldn't have input on the policies. So, that's why we kept with the three, but just to inform you, I think policy only states two.
And are we gonna get to see, can we vote on this inter-agency agreement between the schools and DSS? Do we get to see that before it's just implemented? Cause.
So, yeah, we, we will hold, I mean, once I get a copy of it to read through it, I can definitely share that.
Would that be an MOU, like everything?
So, I, I would have to look to see if that, I mean, what.
It was voted on first time back when we did the DSA policy services. And the way that we end up without having this actual inter-agency agreement is you know how they send over the sample policies? So our policy reads as school division blank, it, the board literally voted on.
On the blank.
The blank document that never had the inter-agency agreement attached to it to read it, to work on it, vote on it. I've read a couple of different ones from different, um, counties around Virginia and they, and they do vary slightly. So, um, some of them are very specific, some are a little less, some of it, they are slightly different. So, I mean, I would like for us to have some sort of say over, yes, this looks good, no, this doesn't look good. One of them, um, one of the divisions I was reading, the inter-agency agreement was talking about how, when the child abuse, there's child abuse that's happening at home or elsewhere, and then there's child abuse that's being inflicted upon by school staff. And the one inter-agency agreement that I liked reading was that when it is that the accused is a staff member of the school, the, the school kind of takes a step back and DSS comes in and they interview the other staff members and they, they do that investigation. So that way there is that, um, you're not investigating yourself kind of a thing, so.
And we, when we do have those, we don't do any investigation. But that, that is, when we make that call, that is.
I'm not saying that missing crime, though.
No, I'm saying with people, with DSS.
Like where we could have closed up some gap, where we are, we're investigating our own.
Yeah.
So, it's like getting that input from outside, it can see, it specializes in, it can be helpful.
But no, I mean, whatever is, is produced and I know Ms. McDonald has been checking on that. Uh, you know, and, and I know, like I told you, I know Ed and I talked, so I think we'll, we'll continue to see where we're at. Of course, once we get it, we'll let our attorneys look at it as well and then let, let you guys look at it at the same time and.
I was gonna circle back to that, so you said the county attorney is starting with it.
Dr. Bailey said that, uh, in the phone call, he told me that the county, they can contact the county attorney to dig it up. So, and I'll check with him, he'll, so. Because we didn't have one anywhere that we could find. They didn't have one anywhere that they could find and so. A good one.
Anything else on this item, this evening? Next up, we have the website and accessible links for staff and community members. I think this is from the, um, just the difference we've all seen in the way that we receive emails from community members within the past month or so, six weeks maybe.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know.
And I know you're trying to protect us from being hacked and all that stuff, I, I know and I, I really appreciate your, your effort. Um, but I think the form, letter, email is, um, you know, they have to enter in their information and do this and that. And some parents said they have to get like a, a code sent to their email first and they have to click and I think it is hindering our accessibility. And I hate hearing any, anybody say, I sent you an email and you never responded to me. Because I would never not respond. So, I think something somewhere is, you've got that very, that balance of security and accessibility and I know I personally would like my email address posted, like on the website so that it, anybody can email us.
So it is, you resist.
Mine is now, okay, okay.
Yeah.
And mine is too, but do they have to fill out a form to actually email us? Cause from this computer, I can email myself easily, but I'm on a school computer.
Yeah, when I click on, I just clicked on you and it came out.
I'll have to look and see.
Okay, you did it all right. You're on topic. That's, no, that's awesome. I know I sent you an email and asked about it, but I, if you, if you got it done, that's awesome. And I appreciate that.
I tried to form a word, a word computer to email myself and I got that form that everybody is asking us about. But you're right, that hasn't been this week, really good that, or even really last week.
So I just did it from like my personal phone to go to email you and it went right to you.
Okay, so that's correct.
That's, I think that's great.
And then just the other links that I would like to see accessible on the website, like we already mentioned, the, the portal to DSS and, um, then, sorry. If we're gonna make parents fill out a specific form to file a complaint, then we need to have that form like easily accessible, um. Let's see.
I think that could go under that parents tab, there's the report child abuse tab now, but I mean, there could even be a next. Cause it doesn't necessarily have to be child abuse that they're trying to tell us about, just some kind of.
Yeah, and I think it, maybe move it out from, move it out from underneath that tab and make it, you know, one of those to the side or like at the bottom of the picture where we have the other little boxes.
So it's easy to find.
Just, you know.
Yeah.
Reporting, and just, just say reporting or something like that.
Reporting concerns, does it even have to be?
And then when they click on it, then it can open up, uh, options for, for parents to use.
I would like that better.
Because there could be a, a Google form put on there that, you know, they could just click, fill out and then hit send and it would go directly to where it needed to go.
Yeah, another one that I have in my paper were, um, the link to, uh, Department of Education for resolving disputes for, for special education, um, links to the Virginia code for whistleblower protection, um, link to the civil rights, link for employee grievances. And then they even have, um, well, we've worked covering mandatory reporter stuff elsewhere, so. But yeah, just as many links as, as possible. So when people are upset and have a complaint, I know for me, even if I'm just doing something as simple. So when people are upset and have a complaint, I know for me, even if I'm just doing something as simple as returning a product and they've got this ridiculous hard to follow return process, like by the time I finish it, I'm on my rate by that point. So like just as easy as possible so that we can hear any issue as early as possible before it has snowballed into a mess.
Don't see a problem with, I mean, that's, I'm going to, I'm going to always look over here.
Send me an email because I could get all that written down. Just send me an email of all those links where you would like them.
Take care of it. Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll look at that and see, you know, put, put a.
All grouped together.
Yeah, different, instead of underneath a tab. Because I know one of the things I get frustrated about is when I go to a website and I have to go, okay, I gotta look under this tab. I go look under this tab. I go look under this tab. You know, it is nice to just say, click and I'm there. So.
Anything else on that? Next up, we have the school division logo.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So you can see the results from our survey. Option one received, what was it on here? 1,248 votes. That's 50.4%. Option two received 479 votes. That's 19.3%. And then number three, 749 at 30.3%. So you can see the total number of responses, 2,476 total responses for the logo. So really what I wanted to do is talk to you about what other additional changes do you want with this logo before anything is finalized. I can tell you, a lot of people are saying the, the cat is a little too skinny.
It is a little too skinny.
I was kind of looking at that cat on that, is that, it's hard to see. Is that a mountain cats font?
I agree about the cat. I also think the hawk, the way its wing tips up at the edge makes it look like a vulture and not a hawk.
Okay.
I think it could be more hawk-like if it were a little quieter.
Okay.
Or just, you know, Google picture of hawk.
Yeah, I agree.
We've got a lot of turkey vultures around here too. Like a hawk to me. But other than that, I like, I would, I would, yeah, maybe just change those two animals a little bit.
And you're saying flatten out the wings a little bit more.
Well, maybe they can't run into the war and it goes in between the two Rs and war.
I'm not sure the proportions are right either. I think its wings are too big.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess.
I think it's a turkey vulture. The cat's waist is way too small, guys. No, it looks very nice.
All right, so I have.
The, okay, this is, what, okay, under public school, what is that? Is that such, is that like a river?
Is that the river?
Is that the river?
Or coming down from the mountain.
Coming down, okay.
Yeah, looks like a crack.
It looks like a crack. Could that maybe look more like a river? Could it be, yeah, blue?
Or do you like the two forks?
Because it kind of almost looks like there's a crack in public school there. And please don't, where, where did we, I think it's great. Really awesome. We just want to, it, it's, it's totally awesome. I love this whole process that we did because we, you know, we're involved with our students. We just want to, we want it to pass.
Okay, so right now I have fatten up the cat. Correct the bird. Look at proportions. And now we're adding, maybe look at the, the river.
Maybe just a place to clarify.
River.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, you don't want to write in the middle because that would be natural.
Okay. What about, you know, do you want to add a sun sitting behind it or? I, I just want to throw it out. I mean, it's a, it's very nice. It did get over half of the votes. And, and the survey went out to parents, faculties, staff, students. So there, there were a lot of people that it was sent out to, to vote on.
And I guess at some point, can, it would be great, we could formally recognize.
Yeah, we will.
Is that in the plan to make sure we formally recognize the artistic people behind that?
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay, so I will get with Ms. Petty on that. So, were you taking notes?
I think that we talked about it quite a bit.
Okay.
I think we found an out. There's also suggestions to round those mountains out a little bit and maybe a little less Rocky Mountains and a little more Shenandoah Hills.
Okay.
Sounds like you guys have been talking about it, so.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, last work session item is the Skyline Middle School's schedule change. Ms. Bragg and Mr. Johnston.
We do have a copy of the slides. So I have Mr. Johnston, principal of Skyline Middle School with me this evening to discuss the schedule change at Skyline Middle School to a seven-period day. The change is recommended to allow for a more student-centered schedule that supports both student academic and behavior needs. And the schedule change also allows Skyline Middle School to hire a reading specialist and two instructional coaches to help support teachers. And that's, comes at a change in the staffing from the current schedule to the seven-period day. So we'll talk a little bit more in detail about the costs. It is a, it is a mitigated cost of about $3,000 for the instructional coaches who work an additional five days on their contract. But other than that, it's a one-for-one swap. So it's not, we're not asking for additional positions.
So we'll explain it a little bit more as we go. And Mr. Johnston, I'll turn it over to you.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Bragg. I'm really excited to talk about this and I appreciate the invitation to do it. So through our partnership with AIR, which we started in December of 2022, I believe that was, that was right around that. AIR came in, that was the American Institutes of Research. We were as a federally identified school at ATSI, additionally targeted for supports and interventions. We got individuals from AIR came down and we met. They, they interviewed staff, they surveyed staff. They, they laid out a, a pretty, pretty good plan. And through those interviews and everything, one of the suggestions, it was, and it was a suggestion, was a more student-centered schedule in terms of the seven, a seven-period day. I'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like here, but some of the recommendations during a meeting that we had here at the beginning of June with them, they had great praise for, for Skyline Middle School and our staff. They praised the dedication of our staff and, and how, how much we really focus on our kids. They did talk about our IEPs and the template that we use. And I do want to shout out to, to Mr. Adams here who's in the gallery because it's his template that they use. So they, they said it's one of the best templates that they've ever seen and all through their research. So also, some of the things that they talked about that we needed to focus on is additional support for students of academic needs, including more professional development, especially with IEPs, and on good teaching practices and an additional support for students who have behavior challenges. So in terms of what this schedule looks like for us, we're moving from a four-period day, that's 75 minutes, to a seven, seven-period day, that's 48 minutes. So students receive four core classes each and every day, so English, math, science, and social studies. They get PE every day, which under our cur, uh, previous schedule, it was every other day. Or sometimes they, they weren't able to fit it into their schedule at all because of a remediation that they needed to take or something like that. So that was really important for us to have. Eighth graders also have access to Spanish I, PE, and band, all, all in the same schedule, which again, had not been able to occur before. So, and this is also more history and science minutes for students. Classes are 20 to 25 students per grade, with grade levels at 200 students. So you're not really looking at a huge increase in, in class size. Just to give you an idea, pre-COVID, Skyline Middle School's class sizes were anywhere between 25 and 30, 30 students per, per class. So just to give you that comparison. Future grade levels are projected between 180 and 200 students. So we have looked at where our students, you know, what, what our students are. So we, we have pre-planned some of that. So essentially, we're looking at two core teachers for each grade level for a total of, excuse me, two core teachers at each grade level at each subject, so English, math, science, and social studies, for a total of eight teachers per grade level down from nine. So why do we, why do we want to make this choice? Why did we make this slide? So basically, this allows us to provide extension periods, we're calling them extension periods, for students who demonstrate a need in math, English, and/or special education. So students who have special education needs will be able to focus with their special education teacher aside from the English or, or math class that they're struggling in to really get that dedicated support. Same thing with students who are, who are just not special education. They, they would be able to get that support as, as well. So we're looking at about 12 students per, per class. There are also, I know, we talked about gate and advanced classes, how we support those students. So science and history would have like an advanced class that they would be able to delve deeper into their subject matters, doing more projects and things at approximately 22 students per extension there. Better utilization of staff. So what we were, what we were looking at there is, we talked about coaches. We talked about, you know, those extension periods, but also more unified, uniformed sizes of our classes. So when we talked, some of our gate classes were very, very small because by the time students got to eighth grade, really they had transitioned into Spanish I and they transitioned into algebra, which is more than you would expect your gate level students to do that, but they also want to take band. And so that, that, being able to utilize staff that way, we're also able to provide behavioral support for our kids. So during the, what we're calling a seminar period that runs where our extensions are housed, we'll be able to pull students and, and can help students in behavioral support. So it could be executive functioning or things like that that they, that they need there. And of course, Ms. Bragg has already talked about reading specialists and instructional coaches, just to touch on that a little bit. 44% of our teachers at Skyline are three years or less of experience. So those coaches are going to be able to, to move around the building and coach our teachers on good instructional practices. That is not, not evaluative, but being, being able to, to support them, you know, moving forward. So the positions that we converted included an English eight teacher to an instructional coach, a reading, uh, excuse me, a remediation teacher to an instructional coach, an English six position to a reading specialist, a math eight position to a science teacher, and a math seven position to a PE teacher. And the PE teacher, you might wonder why we're doing that. We still need to be able to provide enough planning for all my teachers. So I needed an additional PE teacher to support with that.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but all of those changes were be able, were able to be made through attrition.
Attrition, yes, that is correct. Thank you. Thank you for adding that. Yes, because of staff turnover, we were able to then go through and.
So we didn't move a math teacher to a PE teacher or anything like that.
Thank you for that clarification. Absolutely. So central office, this discussion began in March, in, in March, March 16th, I believe it was. And then teachers, teacher discussions started in April. I did a frequently asked questions document, so I was able to provide any information to the teachers and questions and concerns that they had through that. Parent feedback, we provided parent feedback in April and May through our Hox Ness discussion, group discussions. We meet with a parent group once a month, so we were able to provide information through that. We also provide information through emails and call, phone calls home. And any, anytime I met with a parent, I would just say, hey, we're, we're, we're looking at moving to a seven-period day. What are your thoughts on that? And just getting general, you know, informal discussions with the parents there. I also talked to two separate counties with regards to that and two colleagues that are on this, on this schedule as well, just to get their feedback and any challenges that they may have or recommendations that those, those individuals had as well. One just recently moved to, to this type of schedule this past school year and the other has been on this schedule for, for some time. So just, just to understand that depth perspective. Ms. Bragg, did you want to add anything?
Just questions that you all might have about the change or anything that we can clarify to support your understanding.
I just wanted to come back to the math eight and math seven teachers. So those teachers didn't exist at this point or they're.
Great, great, great question. Actually, the one, one position was left on, wasn't left unfilled. We were unable to fill that position because of, I'm unable to find a qualified math teacher. And the other math eight position is actually that individual moved to central office.
But we're able to cover all the math courses that are needed without.
Absolutely. And provide that additional, additional support.
Who is teaching those extension courses?
So it'll be the, it'll be the teachers that are teaching it. So if I, I'll teach, as a, as a teacher, I'll teach periods. So say for example, one, two, a, a math eight teacher would teach periods one, two, three, and four. And then they would come have a planning period and then they would have a meeting period where all their IEPs and planning and PD and anything could happen during that period and then seventh period. They would have students that they have in their class that they know struggle and they would be able to craft very specific instruction for them.
And is that the same for the gate students? Like they would have regular science and then they also have gate science votes?
Yes, so they would, yeah, so it wouldn't be a repeat of the information. It would be a diving deeper into that information. And it would be designed that they would have their, their science teacher or their history teacher.
And are these all going to be here long courses now?
Correct. Yes, yes ma'am.
I think one of the things that the schedule allows to happen is an opportunity to differentiate for our students without having to ask our brand-new 44% with less than three years to differentiate in the classroom while their students are, are there. Differentiation is, it, it's, it's a learned skill. It's something that, you know, I think veteran teachers even struggle with when it comes to differentiation in the classroom and meeting the needs of all the groups. And it's kind of a way to schedule those opportunities to do small group instruction, targeted instruction. And instead of, you know, trying to do that on your first year as a new teacher, you're able to do it through the schedule to meet the special education needs of, of the students and those population groups that, you know, have been identified through testing, SOLs, that sort of thing, to be able to provide that extra remediation time or extension time, whatever the case may be. So it's kind of allowing the schedule to support our teachers to meet the needs of all of our students that is sometimes difficult to do in the 90-minute block where, you know, you have the group that's finished up and they're ready to move to the next thing, but then you still have 10 over here that need additional time. It, it's a way to help the schedule build that in instead of, you know, trying to have new teachers performing, I think, a veteran skill.
And, and one of the things that I'll add to that, one of the teachers that I've worked with for eight years and she's a phenomenal teacher, she would always come to me and say, every year, Bobby, I really struggled during, we would have a flex period where, where teachers would be able to have, you know, 12. to have, you know, 20 students that were there with them, and they'd be able to pull students in to remediate with them. But working with five, you know, middle school students and having another 20 middle school students and still, even for that veteran teacher, was a real struggle. So this model allows us to have those other students with other teachers engaging, continuing to engage in structured learning while those other students that need that support can get it.
And there's still going to be, like, I know there's multiple teams for each grade level.
Did you say teams?
There's still going to be like multiple teams for, you know, there'll be a different team, seventh grade, different teams, eighth grade.
There'll be two teams for different teams.
So those, and I think you mentioned that those teams will still be able to meet regularly as a team of teachers to discuss all those, the kids, and even their planning because now that they're going to have all four of those four subjects every day, I would hate to see, you know, every Friday be the test day for all four subjects. So that's going to be an integral part of that, so that, I mean, obviously, students have to balance everything, but if they get, if they're getting hammered with that big test, you know, every Thursday and Friday, does that make sense?
It does. And so our math and English classes went all year, all year long. Our science and history classes met on an A/B schedule for seventh and eighth grade. For sixth grade, it was science and history, it was on a semester schedule set like in 75-minute block. So, yeah, no, I completely get it. Our teachers have their pacing guides, so it's, you know, when that sixth day hits, they're reviewing and testing. So when that eighth day hits, they're reviewing and testing. I have not seen a lot of, the Friday testing, my big thing is benchmark testing, like, so working along with my staff to make sure, and we did that this past year, making sure our benchmarks are spread about. Yeah, because you don't want four benchmarks in a day. That does not give you good data.
Right.
Because I know, as a parent, one of the things I liked about the longer schedules, you know, I had the student that did well with that, and he wasn't hammered with a lot of like, oh, I have four tests today. Might have one test today, one test tomorrow versus having seven periods a day, but.
How is lunch handled on this schedule? Like, is that one of the seven periods, or we have seven periods plus lunch?
Seven periods plus lunch, it's built in. So lunches are split. So seventh grade has two lunches, eighth grade has two lunches, and sixth grade has two lunches, 22 minutes. So you're running 100 kids through and honestly, I know it sounds like a short amount of time, but they fly through and they have five minutes even at the end to just socialize. And we actually extended lunches a little bit. This schedule gave us an extra time to extend lunches this coming year. So it's built in for sixth and seventh grade, it's built into a seminar period that they have. For eighth grade, it's built into a core period that they have, but it still provides them with enough time to get to lunch, to eat lunch, and get back, get settled, and start class again.
And so you said there's going to be English, math, science, social studies, PE. What are the other two periods that kids are having? Maybe they have extension, but probably not every student, right?
Correct. Well, so for like sixth and seventh grade, they would, they could go into an elective, they could go into their elective. So seventh grade runs semester electives every single day. So it could be agriculture, could be Spanish, excuse me, Spanish exploratory. It could be band, which would run all year. We have several different options. This year, we're also offering second semester health and medical sciences. So that took the place of technology and again, that individual retired, so we replaced that with technology with the help of Ms. Baker, who led us through that. So yeah, those are some of the options. And that runs for sixth, seventh, and the sixth grade runs on quarters, so their classes are quarters, so they get a little bit more variety in their electives. And so if I'm in a sixth grade class, I would have a core class, so maybe English first period, and then second and third period would be my elective periods. So PE may be second, and then, you know, Spanish exploratory, third, and then I would go into a core class. I would go into my seminar period, which would be my extension period, that fifth period, and then sixth and seventh would be core classes. So they would round out with maybe science and history or something like that.
And the feedback you've gotten from the teachers is good feedback?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And thank you, thank you for bringing that up, coming back to the feedback. So yes, the teachers were excited about it, and a lot of the teachers came in and said, this will help me focus on the kids that I need to and know that I'll be able to come back to those students later in the day, be able to really craft a good plan for them based on data that I received in class and work with them. In terms of parents, a lot of the parents were excited to have that shorter period because they feel that their child is, their attention span is shorter. And so that was a positive. I did have one parent who had a concern because she had come from a seven-period day and her child liked the longer blocks. So I talked to them and said, hey, you know, if your child, we feel like your child needs that longer period, we can get them an extension. And mathematically, the neat piece about it is if the child is in an extension, it gets them the same amount of time that they would have had in class with a shift. So it comes out to 225 hours.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just want to say, Mr. Johnson, I have talked about professional development for the staff. So as part of our contractual agreement with AIR, they are providing PD at the start of the year. It's not necessarily specific to moving to a seven-period day, but good teaching practices, high leverage practices, they're going to be providing some of that. PD, Mr. Johnson's worth with T-TAC to talk about helping transition to the seven-period day. And then of course, IRT is accessible to, you know, fill professional development needs as well as they're identified. We can talk about, you know, some of those things. We want to stress the urgency and the, you know, peppy pace, if you will, and not stretching, you know. I think some of what we've seen has been, you know, some stretching of lessons to fill 90 minutes. And, but what we don't want on the reverse side is taking a 90-minute class and splitting it into two 45-minute periods. Like, we need to look at our lessons, we need to look at the instructional strategies we're using, we need to make sure that, you know, we're providing the best instructional opportunities for our students during the times that they're sitting with us and, you know, what explicit instruction looks like versus, you know, small groups and things like that. So we recognize that there's a PD level involved in the change as well.
So if this goes well, would it be something that would be implemented at Warren County Middle School as well?
It could be. We did discuss with Dr. Ballinger whether both schools had to change their schedule at the same time and that sort of thing. And because, unlike at high school where you have like a Blue Ridge Tech Center that you happen to also feed students into, the two schedules don't necessarily have those overlaps, so we did not require, you know, the two to have the same schedule. But if it's something that Warren County Middle wants to explore, they certainly can. Also, I think with the, you know, we knew that there would be a change at the principal position, so trying to force that kind of change with a new building principal, you know, kind of wanted to leave that up to the school to decide. So as far as I know, they'll be on their normal schedule as last year and give Skyline Middle an opportunity to pilot something. Mr. Johnson and I have had many, many conversations about, we have to do things differently in order to see different results. There's no need to wring our hands about scores when we haven't done anything that's been, you know, truly changed. And so will the seven-period day cure all problems? Probably not. Will there be growing pains? Absolutely. Do we need to do it for more than one year to see the result? Yes, you know, but just trying to make some true changes that when we look at the data, you know, we can see if something is starting, starting to move.
And I just, for transparency, I did, when I said, hey, we're going to explore this, I did call Ms. Goobler and let her know, hey, I'm exploring this, just so you know, and that way it was transparent.
And because they're meeting every day for shorter blocks, we have had discussions, just so you all are aware, about any transfer kids, like kids that move back and forth between the schools. You know, as with any student transferring from one school to another, district to district, you know, there may be some overlap or there may be a little bit of gap. But after talking about it with Mr. Johnson, we don't feel like that it would be like massive gaps between a student that would transfer because they're running every day on 45 minutes. Warren County Middle's going to run English and math every day, science and history on an A/B schedule. It strangely sort of works out and doesn't feel as impactful as maybe you would think that it would be.
And through our set pacing, it still runs on a year pacing for English and math and for science and history. And so we, yeah, we're proceeding the student over.
Sort of marries up.
So the only thing that the board, you know, I would be bringing to the board will be at the July meeting would be, when you look at the staffing, those staff positions were already created, except for the two that would add five additional days, which would be an additional $3,000. And so that, because it's an increase, I'll have you guys update that.
And that was done just simply to keep all of our instructional coaches on the same contract. And all of our instructional coaches work a 205-day, whether they're Title I or in this case, the Skyline Middle School. And that's the reason why that was done, was just to make all instructional coaches on the same contract.
Is that a five-day, like, before the school starts?
It's usually determined with the building principal how that works.
It's flexible depending on the right?
It's flexible, you know, depending on the need and that sort of thing. I mean, I can see, you know, there probably being more days at the beginning than at the end, but it doesn't have to be like five and, you know, it's kind of whatever Mr. Johnson works out with them. And those instructional coaches will be going through the same training that our central office has worked hard to develop on student-centered coaching. So they will be going through that same training. One of them has already started that process this year. And so, like I say, so they'll have, will have a common language, even though they're Skyline's instructional coaches will have a common language. And Central Office will still continue to support Skyline Middle School with coaching and things like that for their new teachers, but with the need at Skyline Middle, I think having two designated coaches for that building and their staff is important.
And I think when we look at the additional meeting time, the meeting period, the coaches will be able to go in and provide professional development to the teachers during those in departments or even in grade level settings. So also, under our current, under the current schedule with a four-period day, our teachers would get pulled to IEP meetings or they would get pulled into SST meetings, student support team meetings and things like that. So they would lose a whole, they would lose their personal planning period because of that meeting time. This allows us to really protect that planning time for staff that really need it to do that, so.
One more question. The instructional coaches, do they track throughout the year how much time they spend, like, on different types of professional development, either one-on-one or in small groups? So at the end of the year, you could say, this is, I've supported teachers one-on-one this percentage of time, you know, do they, I don't know, how does that work?
They do.
Because I think that's important data to look at, too.
Doug and Hope, that you be able to primarily work professional development on IRT, test piloted with the TICs this year and with some Title I instructional coaches, a program that actually is designed to track what those interactions look like. It allows you to track full coaching cycles, mini coaching cycles, topics, and that sort of thing. And we are looking at purchasing that license again for next year. And these two instructional coaches would be, would have that same software for them to track their coaching interactions and things like that. So they, you know, they've worked really hard to make sure that we're monitoring the success of our coaching and it's, you know, there is some data to go along and support the needs and kind of what kind of interactions are taking place. So these two coaches would be, would learn how to use that software, too.
I just want to say, I appreciate that you all are working on this. I mean, it sounds like it's probably a really big undertaking to change for you and for your staff. But I absolutely agree with you, Ms. Bragg. Like, we can't just keep doing the same thing and expect to see change. And I think a lot of the things that you're saying are really exciting. I think the coaching support for the teachers, I think the extension for the math and English especially, I mean, there's so much research to support that some kids do need those extra minutes, and to be building that in every day for them, I think is great. I think PE every day is great, I think there's research for that, too. So I think it's really exciting and I'm hopeful that we'll see some changes and I appreciate your doing this. So no, it's, it would be easier to just not do this, right? So.
Well, and I would just like to thank Mr. Johnson. He's put a ton of effort into this and it is not a process for him that started in March. He, you know, has been giving this due diligence and quite a bit of thought for some time and just, you know, needed that support to be able to make that change, which I think in discussions with AIR has certainly, you know, provided some of that data and helped us kind of get over that hump. And that was another thing that they praised, you know, Mr. Johnson and Skyline Middle School for was, you know, not talking about changing the schedule for seven years before they finally did. Like, you know, just jumping in and saying, okay, we're going to do something different and see what, see how it goes.
I'm just wondering.
Absolutely.
Keep us posted.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Do we have anything else this evening on our own work session? Sam, could you lead us into the session, please?
This motion made that this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. The School Board desires to discuss the following matter in a closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, discussion, consideration, or interviews with prospective candidates for employment, assignment appointment, promotion performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining the resignation of employees of the School Board, specifically an employee personnel issue. Discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Is there a second? Mr. Bragg, could you do a little more, please?
Certainly. Mrs. Love?
Aye.
Mrs. Sables?
Aye.
Dr. Funk?
Aye.
Dr. Pence?
Aye. Thank you.